This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so I'll start from the top. Welcome, everyone. This is the May 13th, 2021, special meeting of the Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors. In attendance at this point, we have supervisors Doug Rushton and Betsy DeVryda. We have our Executive Director, Sarah Moorhead. We have our Counsel, Ben Cushman, from the Schutz Law. We have staff member Leah Kellogg. And is there any word that we won't have David or Helen here at some point?
I have not heard that we will not have them. I anticipate both of them will be here.
Okay, well, we will proceed onward. And the first item on our agenda is an agenda review. There had been some suggested changes if Betsy wasn't able to be here, but hello, Betsy's here. So are there any reasons, any need to change anything about the agenda in front of us from either board or staff?
Not on our end.
Okay.
I think we might want to talk about in-person meetings with the recent mask thing off. And I don't know how that plays out with the state being different. But
Okay. Maybe we can handle that under our COVID-19 update. I believe that's item four or five on the agenda. I can't see because we have it's not scrolled down there. But is that okay if we talk about it there, Doug?
Yeah, that sounds that sounds great.
Okay, great. So then with that, we will proceed with our agenda as presented here. First item up here is a couple of contracts, conservation projects. We will take these one at a time in terms of motions and actions. Oh, hello, Helen. It looks like Helen Wheatley, Supervisor Helen Wheatley has arrived.
Sorry, I was having technical problems.
Understood. Some of us did.
Yeah.
So item 2A here is PS Personal Service Contract 2021-01. This is the Riverbend Ranch ASRP Project Development was sent out to us earlier. I hope you've all had a chance to review it. If there are no questions of staff on this, I would entertain a motion on this contract.
Also, also move.
Okay, it's approval has been moved by Doug. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Betsy. Any discussion before we take action?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have two, two items. I'm assuming it's have legal review sign off.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the second one is, I don't see a definition of ASRP in the documents.
I can
Could be that I just missed it.
I can double check and if not include a spell out of Aquatic Species Restoration Plan.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so we all know we're talking about the Aquatic Species Restoration Plan. Thank you, Doug. Any further discussion on this contract? If not, we will move to a roll call vote. Doug, how do you vote?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that item is approved. That contract is approved. That moves us to item 2B, Personal Service Contract 2021-02, the Independence Valley Aquatic Species Restoration Program Project Development. Is there a motion on this contract?
I would like to move this move that we approve this.
Okay, it's been moved by Betsy. Do I have a second?
I'll second for Betsy and for the project.
Seconded by Doug. Any further discussion or questions on this contract?
I have the same comments as on the first one. And it sounds like those are rectified.
Okay. With that, we'll move to a vote. Betsy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that contract is now approved. That moves us to item three, our minutes review and revision. And I noticed that David Supervisor David Iow has just joined. Hello, David. We're moving to item three on our agenda at this point, Minutes Review and Revision. First up, are the board meeting minutes from April 22nd? If we could get those on the screen?
All right, I am pulling those up. Leah just sent those over.
All right.
Leah, do you want to share? I'll put you on the screen, actually, if you want. It looks like the document that you just sent is not the minutes.
And I think you're muted, Leah.
Yes, I am. I just sent you the agenda. I will share my screen and put up the minutes.
Great. I will make you the presenter.
All right.
There we go.
Okay, we have the minutes in front of us. So we'll walk through this page by page as is our custom. Are there comments or questions on page one? Hearing none. Let's move to page two. Questions or comments on page two? Also hearing none. Let's move to page three. Questions or comments on page three? Hearing none. Let's move to page four. Final page. Any questions or comments on page four? I think this is a first, folks, that first time we've ever not made a change in a meeting here. So something's working about a process here, it seems. Okay, so we will move those minutes to our consent agenda for the May board meeting. And then let's go back and take a look at our work session minutes next.
Nice job, Leah.
You guys should thank Susan. She and I have been painfully going through each sentence. And I'm learning a lot.
I hope it's a good pain.
It's good.
All right, the work session minutes up here. Here we go. And so same thing, questions, comments, changes on page one.
Do we, excuse me, I have one comment.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Do we have the right title for what Stephanie presented? Was it just about the Congress?
That was the title that of the topic she was requested to present. She did include more in her presentation than that.
Okay.
We could definitely add and South Sound Green if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do that.
I just wanted to be sure it made sense to.
Let's go ahead and add that just so that we are specific with the content that we were presented. There we go.
South Sound Green Update?
I think you could just leave South Sound Green.
Yep, okay, there we go. Okay, any other changes to these minutes?
One quick clarification, the word green is all capital letters. It's actually an acronym.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with that change, we will also move these minutes to consent agenda for our May board meeting. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Shall we spell out C E R B? On the fifth bullet?
Line seven, yep. Community Economic Revitalization Board.
I do not know how to spell revitalization.
You just need a V after the E.
There it is.
And change the Z to a T.
Got it. Somewhere in there.
No, you're still missing.
I'm getting close. I'm getting close. What was the last one? Board? Is that correct?
Just run it through a spell check.
I will. I will, absolutely.
Is the last one Board she's asking?
So L I Z.
A.
A.
Got it. Thank you, everyone.
It's the glory of typing on a live screen.
Any further changes to these minutes? Hearing none, we will move those to consent to May board meeting, consent agenda to May board meeting.
And Sarah, I'll pass the screen back to you.
Thank you, Leah.
Leah, did you save that just?
I did, but it's still open. I just minimized them.
I just want to, you know, sometimes in the midst of all this, we forget those little details.
Thank you.
Okay. So that takes us next up to item four, the Conservation and Education Center topic. Number of pieces on this to talk about this month. We'll start with item A here, the RFQ update. If you want to bring us up to speed, Sarah.
Yeah, absolutely. So we sent out our solicitation for qualifications or our request for qualific for educator email from a couple ago that said the scope a little bit. Can you hear me okay? I see some.
You're breaking up a little bit.
I hear you okay.
Let's try that. Is there an echo this time?
That's better.
Awesome. If it continues to give us trouble, I'll call in. But you received an email from me a couple of weeks ago about revising the scope for our requests to remove the section of the RFQ that was associated with the Curb funding application. We'll delve a little bit more into why that occurred during this next, you know, subtopic here. But oops.
Sorry, that's my phone. Gregory, can you hear that?
But in the meantime, that initial sort of scope of work that the board had identified in that Phase One study went forward. And so TCD sent that out to 447 different firms within the area. So a very robust net was cast to invite them to submit a proposal under this. Of that, 23 firms requested a detailed copy of the RFQ. So we sent out an initial, this is the project we're doing. If you'd like a copy, you know, please let us know. That went down to 23. Of the 23 that requested that copy, three of those firms ended up submitting questions according to our timeline for questions about the request. We sent out a copy of those answers in a response addendum on May 10th to all of the 23 firms that requested a copy of the RFQ. Our, the final responses from any interested party are due back on May 7th or 17th, excuse me, May 17th. So we will know next week how many in this and sort of what the scope of their proposal looks like. Right.
Sarah, I'm no longer hearing you. Are others hearing Sarah?
No.
No, okay. We lost your audio, Sarah. Okay, we'll call in. Great choice.
Did you see what she said, TJ?
Did not.
She suggested, would you like to talk to her?
Okay, I can start to talk about that. So the requirement in order to submit an application with Curb is to have a conversation with the Executive Director about what we would be requesting. Sarah and I had that meeting with the Executive Director and another staff member from Curb. I guess it was a couple of weeks ago now. And to make a long story short, they essentially said that they would not be in a position to fund what we were asking for at that point. It was a very useful meeting because we learned a lot more about what Curb does and how it does or does not fit with with what we're thinking about with Conservation Education Center. So I see Sarah's back. I'm going to stop right there with that teaser. Let's wrap up on the RFQ because item B, the Curb update spins right into item C. So let's go back to you, Sarah.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to do a sound check and make sure folks can hear me okay.
That's good.
Thank you. I keep looking right at you and you, TJ and Helen, because I can see your cameras. And when the brows get furrowed, I know I can't, no one can hear me anymore. So I was just ending that statement that all of the responses from any interested firms with their proposals are due with their list of qualifications are due on Monday back to the district. And then I'm working with Betsy and David and Susan to schedule another subcommittee meeting after the response date to sort of review those, evaluate those and organize some feedback so that we can submit that with the responses to the full board for review prior to the board meeting. So I sent, we're still in scheduling for that meeting. But we are looking to sort of review those documents next week. So that's sort of the timeline and what we're looking at there. Are there any questions on that process piece before we jump back into Curb?
Sounds like
All right.
Or not. So I'll pick up where I left off. And I don't know, Sarah, did you catch any of what I was saying about Curb or were you offline at that point?
I think I heard the majority of your conversation about learning more about the alignment of Curb and their interests and missions with what we're doing after our meeting with their director.
Okay, great. Yeah, so as I said, the outcome of that meeting was that where we are with the Conservation Education Center in terms of doing a feasibility study was not and the way we've thought about this Conservation Education Center is not a good fit for Curb. The director said she loves conservation districts and she said, our project sounds great. It's just not a good fit for Curb. And it's not a good fit primarily because they don't fund public sector projects. So the Conservation and Education Center being largely a facility to allow the district to offer more services and programming and have a more efficient administration, all those sorts of things we've talked about, that really benefits us. It indirectly benefits a whole lot of people in the community. But that's not what Curb does. Curb, they're about job creation by and large and enabling the private sector to create jobs and create economic development. So for example, if our Conservation and Education Center was being designed to provide, let's say, space for startup food processing businesses that we had previously identified, that might be a fit that would work for Curb because it would be directly benefiting a private sector employer in terms of economic development and jobs. So that's why it wasn't a fit. But it also led into this broader discussion, and I'm kind of morphing here to item 4C about community needs and opportunities. And the question here, I guess, to some degree, it's sort of a philosophical question to me, anyway. To what degree should our project be focused on economic development and creating jobs in the public sector versus having adequate facilities for us as a governmental organization to deliver services to a community? And then a related question is, are there other organizations in the community that either could be providing those direct benefits to private sector or are already doing so? And the thing that immediately came to mind as we were talking about that is really that's how the EDC has positioned themselves, particularly in regard to the Tonino Ag Business Park. That's essentially what it is. They're trying to create economic development in the agricultural sector. And potentially that project is a really good fit for Curb. I don't know if they've, they've thought about that or if they've applied or they're thinking of applying. But at any rate, I guess the question to lay before our board is, to go back to what I said, to what degree is, is our thinking about this Conservation Education Center aimed at creating economic development and private sector job creation? So that's my take on it. And before I think we open it up broader, I'll just invite Sarah to add anything since she was also in the meeting.
Yeah, thanks for that, TJ. I do have a couple of thoughts to add to that. And I think one of those is, you know, this brainstorm piece that we're about to begin on community needs and opportunities, I think will inform the answer to that first question about to what degree is our thinking in, in creating this Conservation Education Center aimed at private sector job creation? I think looking at the community level first and seeing what are the gaps that are out there that the, that the Conservation District with our sort of broad RCW might be able to and should reasonably within our mission fill. And, and I think looking at that in sort of a very broad and high level lens and, and then sort of tapering down from there might be a really helpful exercise in answering that question. A couple of thoughts. You know, Spokane Conservation District is utilizing that nexus with Curb and sort of leading that charge in some of their job creation as a, as a, with tenants, local tenants, because there's, there are a lot of entrepreneurial opportunities and not enough space. And so they're, they're creating that nexus. There's a presentation on it next week. So I can learn a little bit more about the specifics of that nexus. The, the processing piece was an example, a great example that TJ gave that might be served in another capacity. And I would also encourage folks to look broader at other sectors that the district may or may not, should or should not be involved in. The, I think strongest example that we discussed during the conversation with the Curb Director was this sort of reoccurring idea of some sort of incubator farm concept was utilizing, you know, the Conservation Education Center property to further our mission for farmland and natural resource preservation by preserving some sort of working land property and then partnering with new beginning startup operations to come in and actually work and manage businesses on that, work the land and manage those farm-based businesses. This is a concept that's come up from time to time with various board member compilations over the years and probably longer than, than I've been at the district. And it's certainly, there's a lot of pros and cons to that specific idea. But that's just an example of utilizing that private sector nexus that is very much, I think, within the wheelhouse of the Conservation District versus something that a community partner is currently sort of doing and filling. So yeah, I, I am going to take some really good notes. And I can turn my screen on so that we can see those thoughts and notes sort of populate if you guys would like. But yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to hear from the board sort of all of these different avenues because we've started to aggregate a lot of these that we see in our daily interactions with the community at the staff level for recreation or K-12 education or whatnot. Not all of them are really aimed towards private sector job creation, but they are aimed towards other types of community needs that other funding sources might be more appropriate for.
Sarah, can I just jump in for just a quick question, a quick comment?
Oh, yes, please. Susan was also part of this meeting. Thank you, Susan.
I'm sorry. I totally apologize, Susan. I forgot that you were a part of the meeting.
No worries. I didn't talk much, that's why.
I think I commented on that.
Yeah. I just wanted to add one thing that I noticed that I observed at the meeting. The meeting shifted when we started talking about farmers, when we started saying economic development for farmers. And so I just wanted to put that in there because I know it shifted every, it just shifted the mood of the meeting and it might help sort of help frame that, the conversation that you guys are going to do.
It shifted in which direction?
In a positive direction.
In a positive. Because we were talking about, we were talking about the need that farmers have for accessing land and affordable land and space and shared equipment and technical expertise and mentorship. We were talking about all of these needs that those startups farm business operations, you know, need to have or would, or would benefit from and that that is a potential nexus that the district could serve. And so that's really where that shift came from, is telling the community need story. And the Conservation and Education Center is the, is the solution, you know, that's sort of the support piece that achieves that, that community need rather than the need of the center.
And I'll just add one thing to that before opening it up. At the end of the meeting, I think we were told by the Executive Director that as we go through this feasibility study that we have the RFQ out for, if that turns out that during that process, we identify a strong opportunity to support private sector job creation, economic development, we were definitely encouraged to come back to Curb again. They didn't close the door permanently on this, but they said, if your project goes in this direction where it meets our funding criteria, then yeah, we'd like to talk to you again in the future. where it meets our funding criteria, then yeah, we'd like to talk to you again in the future. Um, so just so that's clear, it's not like the door's been shut forever. Um, so with that, let's open it up for some, some thoughts and discussion. Anyone? Jump on in.
Hello?
Go ahead, David. Hello, David. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, uh,
Uh, David, I'm not hearing you. Are others hearing David?
I hope you guys can hear me okay. I'm having a hard time hearing some of you from time to time. Uh, please let me know if you can't. Maybe I'll shut my camera off and hopefully that'll help.
We can hear you now.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'll leave my camera off because that's been messing with things a little bit. Uh, perfect. So I was just going to say, I think, you know, what Sarah mentioned earlier, uh, it might be good to look into this more, you know, as our group here and really, you know, look at what the purpose of the Conservation District is. Uh, my gut right now is telling me that we don't want to go down the avenue of, of economic development and helping farmers or other landowners pursue their economic dreams. I think our role, what I'm guessing, what our role is, is to, uh, to, you know, work with landowners to help preserve the land. And that's, that's where I think our focus should remain.
Thanks, David. Betsy, go ahead.
First of all, I have to find out how to reverse my camera because if I raise the hand, my, it doesn't show in the camera. I have to reverse my brain. Um, I'm inclined to agree with David. I actually, when you started talking, it reminded me of how we, um, felt about the timeline for the, the thing outside of Tenino. It's like, well, you know, are we trying to make the foot fit in the shoe? And this seems a little like that too. I never thought of us as someone who teaches new farmers. As much as I know coming from me, it seems odd that this, jumping on this, but, you know, there are, I don't know how active they are now, but we have, you know, we have Abbott Green and that's certainly active. And we have, um, there was the incubator farm thing going at Scatter Creek Land Trust. Um, so I think we're, I think we're stretching a little here.
Thanks, Betsy. Doug, you're next up.
Okay, I had to turn my cameras off because I just was not hearing most of what folks were saying. I agree both with Betsy and David. I think we need to be focused because we have limited resources and that kind of helps you focus on stuff. But I would point out that 8908, the RCW allows us to do about anything. So if we see something that might be good for our community, I think that'd be fine too. But I think staying focused on working lands and also, uh, on urban people. I think both of those are good things.
Thanks, Doug. Helen, do you want to jump in?
Well, I don't, I certainly agree with everything everybody said. I don't have, haven't heard anything I disagree with. Um, and I'm, I would push that a little further and maybe ask the question, what I'm imagining, when I think about the future of the TCD and the amount of potential growth, I'm thinking about the conservation work and I'm thinking that it probably is the case that, um, you know, the most, most urgent issue right now is making sure there's the space and the support for the growth of programs that, that we're supporting. You know, basically room for staff to, to get their work done. Um, room for, um, the sort of physical infrastructure that we need to do that and room for supporting, um, the educational and outreach function of, of the TCD. So, so when I'm imagining this future center, that's what I'm seeing. Um, and it is very much sort of like you said at the beginning, very beginning TJ, that it's about supporting, um, the administrative end, I guess, is, is a top priority in my mind. So, yeah, I don't think I had, you know, I don't have anything more to add at, at this point, but that's kind of my picture of it. I mean, I'm really hoping that, you know, that the mission is really going to grow with all these changes to, um, you know, all these new programs that theoretically you're going to filter down from the federal government or whatever, you know, that we're going to be doing a lot more conservation work, I certainly hope, uh, in Thurston County, and, and I hope that the TCD can be a big part of that.
Yeah, thanks, Helen. Uh, Doug just noted that our strategic plan should provide us guidance on this, and that was one of the questions I, or one of the comments I was going to raise too, is, um, we should always be looking back at the strategic plan, um, that really is our guiding star, um, going forward. Um, I agree with everything my colleagues have said here. Um, and knowing that this will likely be the single biggest, i.e. most expensive project the district has ever done, um, makes me want to keep a really narrow focus on, um, the needs that we have identified. Now that said, as we go through this process, um, of sussing out the feasibility, if we identify opportunities that might work for us in our core mission, but also meet the goals that Curb has for private sector job development, we should be open to that. But we should not, uh, I don't, I want to make sure that that doesn't drive us in a direction we don't want to go. Um, I do also think it'd be worth, and we've talked about this, having more conversation with the EDC about opportunities for partnering, um, around this. And I'd like to get a clearer idea from the EDC, um, you know, is that what they see their role as? Um, because, you know, we don't want to get crosswise with the EDC, um, and, um, uh, step on territory that somebody else either is doing or thinks they're going to be doing, wants to be doing in the future. Um, I'm always really weary about mission creep, so I like to take these things step at a time. And nothing up until this point has told us that we're moving in that direction of doing this to create jobs in the private sector. If it turns out that we can do that through achieving the goals that we want to achieve, okay, that's, that might be interesting in the future. But, uh, that for me is the future and it's not the phase that we're in now in terms of thinking about this center.
TJ, I have a couple of questions and comments. Can I interject?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Sarah.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, one is about the EDC collaborations. And, and I would just say, I think you're absolutely right there. Um, the district and the EDC and WSU Extension, as well as a lot of other partners, you know, both, both public, private and nonprofit, um, are working highly collaboratively on all of this moving forward, infrastructure development, producer support, land preservation. I think there's more collaboration and synergy today than there has ever been before. Um, and so it's, it's really rewarding and wonderful because we, we are continuously, um, especially as we realize new opportunities, assessing roles and responsibilities and strengths and weaknesses of our different entities and who should be taking leads on different things. And really what is the wheelhouse of those organizations? So, um, and a lot of that strategic sort of community level planning and framework is going into a lot of these larger funding applications that you're seeing, like the Sentinel Landscape Works. Um, and, and there's a lot of others, uh, planning at that level that's happening right now. So, um, yeah, I, I think that you're absolutely right there. And, um, those conversations are happening regularly as well with, with those entities, especially the EDC. Um, and they, you know, we can delve into that another time, more specifically about sort of what their thoughts and interests are moving forward and, and WSU as well. Um, the other piece, uh, is part of our feasibility study. Uh, we'll look a little bit into these partnerships. Um, and we've asked the consultants to investigate some of these, and I have some specifics. You know, so, you know, as well as general partnerships, there are some specific opportunities and some specific partners that have sort of, um, reached out to us over the years or invited us to discuss collaborations. And so through this process, aggregating all of that information in one space at one time for the board to sort of look at and compare in, um, some sort of level playing field, I think that's going to be really helpful. And the EDC is certainly one of those, you know, to be able to look at what a collaboration and synergy is look like there. Um, the other question I guess I would have is, um, Helen mentioned looking at doing more conservation work um, in the future, and I'm, I'm just curious, uh, if you can share a little bit more about what you are referring to specifically as conservation work? Because I, I think from, from my sort of perspective, everything we do is conservation work. And I think you're meaning something that's a subset of that, that's a little more specific? Or are you just meaning more volume?
I just mean in terms of more volume, Sarah.
That's helpful. I just want to make sure I was capturing these notes and thoughts accurately and that there wasn't something I was misinterpreting. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would add to that, yeah, I agree with Helen, volume, but also, um, things like climate change, which we haven't done a whole lot with, um, and there's vast potential to do a whole lot more, um, with climate change and through partnership with the Thurston Climate Action Plan and, and other things. So there could be areas that we're just, and, and that is in our strategic plan, so, um, um, and I've always thought that that's one of the reasons we need a more adequate facility is because we are going to be challenged as an organization to deliver more services and a broader range of services as climate continues to deteriorate.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah. Um, and, and I, and I guess that's, uh, we don't know what that's going to look like, but it seems to me that the way that it's being talked about right now is to use the current programs and modify them and put them to work in ways that support that goal or that mission. So, yeah, we don't really know what it's going to look like, but we can assume that it's the sort of work that the Conservation District does now, but more of it, and perhaps with new funding sources if we're lucky.
Well, I guess the good news, Go ahead, Doug.
We, we need, thank you. Uh, we need to define what we mean by our terms like volume. Does that mean more acreage? Does that mean serving more clients? So as we get into this more deeply, I think we need to, to define that sort of thing. And I think we need to look out five or 10 years in the future. And we kind of can't do this with climate change, I realize that, but okay. What are the trend line, where stuff looking like it's going? And how can we position ourselves to, to be in a good position though? Predict the future.
Well, I predict we're going to need to take on more technical staff. Um, that's my prediction. I don't know. What do other people think?
Well, we got to have a facility for them to be housed in. So I think that, that's part of this whole discussion of why we need, why we need this facility. Because we see ourselves as a growing organization, uh, certainly in terms of providing services. Um, and that requires just more space.
And to answer your question very directly, Helen, we need two more full-time technical staff now with the waitlist and volume that we have, and then we will still probably be at capacity.
Okay, well, if I could try to bring this to a close, because we do have other items on our agenda, um, what I'm hearing here is pretty strong, um, agreement among the board that at this point, we don't see ourselves as being primarily driven by, uh, private sector job creation. Um, but that we're open to looking at opportunities that come up as we continue to do feasibility and analysis on this, um, on this center. And as Sarah pointed out, we have a lot of partnerships already and we will be continuing to look at how those partnerships could grow, as well as new partnerships, uh, if we are in a better position in terms of just facilities to, to help other people, organizations, et cetera, whether they're private or, or public sector. Um, so is there anything else anyone wants to say on this before we move back on our agenda? Okay, thank you all. That was a good conversation and I think it helps, certainly helps. It'll help our, uh, our subcommittee as you're looking at those RFQs and as we continue to work, uh, on hiring and directing a consultant on this project. So, thank you. Uh, item five, uh, is COVID health update here. Uh, Sarah, we'll start with you first on that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and so my, my update is fairly short on our end and, and that's that we're continuing, um, business as usual. We have not made any adjustments or changes in how we are, uh, what we've reported from the last time we gave a COVID health, uh, health update last month. Um, you know, we are allowing access into the office. We still have the same sort of protocols in place for that. Um, staff are still remaining in telework, um, you know, unless, unless they're coming into the office for specific things. Um, and, you know, we really want to be confident if we're going to make any large shifts in, in staff moving, you know, we've seen an uptick in cases in the county in the last week or so. And, um, you know, we, we plan to, um, be cautious and, and play it safe. And, uh, try and make one, one move at a time, rather than sort of preemptively um, making assumptions that things are, are transitioning. And, um, I know, so that's, that's all we have for locally and what, what's happening in the organization right now. And of course, we're watching how other guidance in other areas is, um, progressing and what that does for Washington State or for Thurston County specifically. And ultimately, our local public health here in Thurston County, um, is the, is the guidance that we are most closely following, right, that govern this specific area. And then of course, any state guidance that comes out related specifically to, to state government employees. So those are the two sources of information that we, um, utilize in our, um, assessment for COVID-19.
Uh, I got a question, Sarah, um, and I, and I know we can't, and I'm not asking about specific individuals because that's a whole, whole area, but do you have a sense in terms of our existing staff, how many of them, um, have received vaccines at this point?
Um, so I will say to that, that I think folks that are interested and, um, able to receive vaccines have not been having challenge in accessing them.
Right. Um, so I guess part two of this is the issue that Doug brought up in terms of resuming, potentially, uh, resuming in-person meetings. Doug, since you brought it off, do you want to talk first about that?
Yeah, I think Sarah's on the right track to follow what the local health department says. Uh, I'm fully vaccinated, but I think as you're alluding to a little bit, TJ, we can't ask people under the HIPAA rules about that kind of stuff. And frankly, uh, there's a lot of people going around without using masks, taking what to me seemed fairly simple precautions. And I wouldn't want to open up our board meetings for the public. Uh, that would be one of the reasons. So I'm okay with as is, and I, I think it'd be really, really less hassle, uh, to keep it as is for a while at least, rather than try to open it up early.
Thoughts from other board members?
If I could, um, there was just a decision from the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission that asking for proof of HIPAA, I mean of a COVID vaccines does not violate HIPAA. And we therefore have a policy right to ask at least front-facing employees if they have been vaccinated and to consider whether we should limit their interaction. have been vaccinated and to consider whether we should limit their interaction with members of the public if they have not.
Ben, my assumption would be that that does not cover members of the public who could potentially want to come to a board meeting. Is that true?
That's true. We don't have a right to ask any member of a public for that information and, and/or to require it for access to our facilities. So that's the other piece of whether we want to open up our facilities to the public is we can't, we can't control the public, but we can, under current federal interpretation, ask our employees about it. And, and, and we can even ask non-front-facing employees about it if they're going to be interacting with other employees. Basically, there's a, there's a, an exception that's being made to HIPAA given the contagiousness of this virus.
I have a, a question for you, Ben, in follow-up, if I might, TJ.
Yeah, go ahead.
What do you, do you anticipate additional legal challenge of that, Ben? Because I would, I would hate for us to start down a trajectory based on this outcome and, and then have further litigation in the future, you know, sort of reverse that. I know that this is just a very controversial topic and there's all sorts of reasons behind individuals who do not receive a vaccine. And some of them are also medical related and so navigating the HIPAA concerns around that.
Yeah.
Some of them are religious reasons. And I just, I, from an employer standpoint, I feel like that still is a very risky conversation to begin to have.
As, as a practical matter, I do not recommend the district be the guinea pig for the litigation on that. There will be litigation on that. I don't think that we necessarily will be. If, if someone tells us they are not vaccinated, we cannot ask them why. That does get into rules. Basically, the way I would recommend treating a person who says they are not vaccinated is treat that as if it was a disability and provide them with a reasonable accommodation for the duration of the pandemic. And that accommodation could be that they, if they're interacting with people, they have to continue to be masked or double masked, that they primarily work from home, that they basically do everything we were doing prior to the vaccine. The easy rule for us could just be to keep going as we're going. I just want to raise the possibility of making a policy change and not being worried about asking the initial question because of HIPAA. But I think that we don't want to be the, the employer that gets sued for asking the question. Someone's going to do that. Someone's going to be that and let somebody else trail blaze that path rather than us, I think.
I also think that we probably should be taking guidance from governors directives and state directives on Open Public Meeting Act. And at least at this point, they're not pushing for us to go back to the old days. And I think until we get a clear signal from the governor, the AGs, whatever regarding Open Public Meetings Act, I, I'm quite comfortable continuing to operate as we are here now in our, in our virtual go-to-meeting world. Thoughts from other board members?
I would just say, I agree with what has been said. I think there's no rush. What you just said, TJ, is, is another good place to look for guidance.
All right. So I think the takeaway here is for now, status quo, meaning we are going to continue to have our work sessions and our board meetings using this electronic platform. And as guidance and circumstances change, we will reevaluate. Okay. With that, let's move to item six on our agenda. The question of expanding long-term ag designation in Thurston County. So I'll, I'll give a little background on this one. So as you all know, the county commissioners have initiated a community-driven review of agriculture through the county planning office this year. And that process has been coordinated largely with the county ag advisory committee. Both Sarah and I and Helen at times have participated in that process with the ag committee meetings. I know Sarah's also done some work with Jennifer Davis, the planner at the county in terms of data collection. They just completed a big survey. And so there's a lot of issues being raised in that process. One of the most important in my mind, and one of the ones that seems to be rising to the top quicker than others, is the question of whether the county has designated enough acreage for long-term agriculture. So back when the county put its comprehensive, less, less comprehensive plan together, went through the process and identified certain amount of long-term agricultural zoning. And right now, that is 4% of the rural, the unincorporated part of the county, 4% of the lands are designated long-term ag. That's a much lower number of acres than most of the other counties in Western Washington. Thurston County was sued by Futurewise over that issue, which is really what led to this work program on the, on the community-driven review of ag, because they were saying you don't have enough land set aside for long-term agriculture. Just this morning, the county commissioners had a briefing from Jennifer Davis on sort of the status of this review of agriculture project. And I, I was, I was there in a virtual way. Jennifer made a great presentation and she explicitly put this issue of long-term ag acreage up and with, with a clear indication that we probably need to designate more of that. And I did not hear from any of the county commissioners, and all three of them were participating in this briefing. None of them said, no, that's a bad idea. Okay? It, it was a work session. They weren't making decisions, but nobody jumped up and said, that's a bad idea to, to put more land in long-term ag. They did recognize there will be a lot of consequences and it will be a complicated process to take land out of one zoning designation and to put it in another zoning designation like long-term ag. Some people are going to like that, other people aren't going to like it. It'll be a long process. Last month, the county ag advisory committee agreed that they think we should have more land designated in long-term agriculture. And they have told the county commissioners that. That was reported back to the county commissioners today at their briefing by Jennifer Davis from the county. So I asked that we put this on our agenda today because I think it would be a really good idea for the Conservation District to weigh in on this topic and to let the county commissioners know that we also believe that we need to have more land designated in long-term agriculture. And, and there will be lots of opportunities over the remainder of 2021 and into 2022 to weigh in on other parts of recommendations that are coming out of this review of agriculture. But this one, I think, is timely now and we could act on it now and make our voice known in a way that would give some momentum to, to pushing that, that topic along a little bit through the planning process. As far as I see it, the only downside to designating more long-term ag is that there's going to be a landowner that doesn't want their land to be designated long-term ag. That always happens. But in terms of existing policies and goals and everything else that the county has for rural economies and for agricultural economic development, having more land to work with supports all of that stuff. So my recommendation to you all would be that we weigh in and tell the county commissioners, yes, we need more long-term ag. Let's look at what other, you know, what other counties around Western Washington, I-5 corridor have done. But we know if we're gonna, we're gonna save ag in this county, we need to have policy tools like long-term ag designation to do it. I'll just end here with a couple of numbers. At this point, we only have 5,700 acres protected in, in that category in Thurston County out of 330,000 acres. So it's a tiny, tiny percent of our land base that's in long-term ag. And over the last five years, well, 2012 to 2017, the last ag census, we continued to lose farmland in Thurston County. We lost 19% of our farmland in just that five-year period. So clearly, we've got to do something differently if we're going to save farmland. And long-term ag designation strikes me as a really simple, logical way to, to step into that. So thoughts from others, comments, questions?
Go Doug.
Go Doug.
Okay, thank you. I'd say two things. One is I, I agree with you, we should weigh in on this. And two, I'd like to make a mention of forestry too, forest lands, because those are working lands as well. But I think initial focus, sure, long-term ag, we should be saying something about that.
Yeah, and my understanding is, thank you, by the way, but my understanding is that this planning process is not looking at working lands generally or forest lands, but specifically at ag lands. Not that the others, but they've created this process and chartered, chartered this study. It's really about ag land.
Yeah, I understand.
I had a que, well, first I, I wanted to say, yeah, I absolutely support this. I've been working with the League of Women Voters, you know, as a member of the league, I've been on the subcommittee that's been working on this issue. And, and one of the recommendations that that, that the league is making in terms of what kind of land is brought in under long-term agriculture is to reduce the parcel size. That's been the real sticking point is that the parcel sizes were too large, especially for the nature of farming in Thurston County. So, so what the league did is it, it looked really carefully at the, the soil types and the land uses, talked to the TRPC and their, you know, buildable lands work about mapping some of that and using some of that to, to carry over to, to this issue. And I think that the work is pretty far down the road of identifying what those lands are, and that reducing the parcel size is really going to help to fold those into the LTA designation. And the key thing is that a lot of that land is the kind of land that actually is most under threat of conversion because it's close to the boundaries of UGAs or, you know, other kinds of threats. So, so I think it's a, you know, it's a really important piece. And, you know, I hope it doesn't stop there, but, but I think this is the first and most important step. And it sounds like the county is really, really ready to go down that road. So, yeah, I think helping to give it a push is a great idea. My question for Doug is woodlands, you know, how do you combine? Or would long-term agriculture land be able to incorporate woodland that's part of a, of farm acreage that's, you know, woodlots? How, how does that work?
Well, I, I don't know the legal definitions of long-term ag in this county or the, the forestry zoning, but there are places where it's called ag forestry where you run your cows underneath the trees, for example, or you interplant. But I think one bite at a time, I think we should weigh in on that when that comes up too, or we could push to get that brought up at some point. But I think just mentioning it in this, in this scenario would be a good thing. So I, I don't really know, Helen.
TJ, can I add some comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Helen, in my experience, it's typically only Christmas trees that get covered within that agricultural piece, but any sort of timber is usually not. The idea of silver pasture and agroforestry, those concepts are still that usually the marketed product is a food or a fiber source, or mostly a food source, but there's also maybe a fiber byproduct in there. So those might be, I think that's an innovative concept to explore. I think that the long-term agricultural land designation would potentially be a much faster way to sort of slow the bleed of conversion of ag land in this county. Because even organizing easements and then finding funding for them and arranging those individual parcel-by-parcel contracts or farm-by-farm contracts is a multi-year process. And, you know, maybe three years or two or three years from beginning to end at a minimum and how much land is lost in that time. On the flip side, some nuances to keep in your, in your back pocket, just from the Conservation District work that we do and the community that we serve are definitely, what would the impacts of this zoning do to some of our farm operations? And their successional planning opportunities? If, if the, if their retirement is in the land, right, where most, most farmers, their retirement is in their land and the value of the land, what does this transition in zoning do to the future of that business and the viability or transferring it from generation to generation? So that would be an interesting intersection to look at the impact of any sort of lost land value. And, and, you know, unintended negative consequences for sure for, for private landowners. The second thing on that would be positive for increase in streamlined permitting processes would be an exciting incentive for that transition. So thinking about when the board is looking at writing the letter, some specific solutions and pieces to anticipated community problems might be worth including, you know, streamlined building permit process for agricultural buildings for those lands that are, are zone long-term ag, is just an example idea. And of course, being the Conservation District, you know, we're looking at that incentive-based conservation approach all the time. How can we reduce these barriers to create more win-win solutions? And, you know, not typically are landowners compensated during zoning changes. You know, that is one of the attractive pieces about conservation easements is that they're compensated for their relinquishment of development rights. And that doesn't happen in zoning changes. So what are, what are the incentives that cannot accompany that process in this community? So those are some thoughts. Thank you.
I, I think, I mean, may I just respond real quickly to just one element of that? I, I think from my understanding, it sounds like that's a conversation that is very much being held. And I think one of the concepts that the county is very interested in, and it kind of goes to our early conversation about the role of the EDC and, and Wazoo extension and so forth, is this idea that the county might hire a staff person or, or somehow find some way to provide support for permitting, permitting support, streamlining the process, you know, making it easier to, to deal with some of this. I think that's the, another piece they're very seriously looking at is, is finding ways to provide staffing to, to help people more directly. So I know they're thinking about these things and I agree with you that, that in any letter we write, we should indicate that we are as well.
Betsy, you were, I saw your hand.
Yeah. One thing I wanted to know about is, so let's look at the Mueller property, 80 acres that was in ag, not, maybe not long-term ag. And now they're converting back to nature, so shall we say. What would happen to property like that if it was in long-term ag? Would they not be allowed to go back to, to that? I mean, because I'm looking at some things like that on my property. I mean, because I'm looking at some things like that on my property. So that's one thing I wanted to ask. Maybe someone knows more about that.
Well, I can just say on that, that if you're designated long-term ag, it does put a series of restrictions on what can happen with the property. So yeah, it's quite possible, and I don't know the Mueller piece necessarily, but it is a more restrictive zoning by design because it's being designated long-term ag because we want it to continue to function in agriculture. And there are trade-offs for that.
If I could, it might be worthwhile for me to do some touch-up research on this and then do a presentation to the board on what I understand the current state of the law is. People who aren't lawyers in the land use field talk about these issues differently. And long-term ag is not really the safe way to talk about it. Under the Growth Management Act, the designation is agricultural lands of long-term significance. And that imposes a number of developmental restrictions under the Growth Management Act. Under the tax code, you get open spaces agriculture, which requires, at least for larger pieces, that the land be continuously used for a long-term, for an agricultural use. And the result is frequently, because people are talking about a length of time, they don't know exactly which group they're talking under. I think we're now looking at increasing the number of lands in Thurston County designated as agricultural lands of long-term significance. And that means that they are already agricultural lands, but they will now have another layer of growth management restrictions on taking them out of the use and not just the tax implication of taking open space land out of an open space designation, which could trigger back taxes. But an actual land use restriction that would prevent that from happening, even if back taxes were offered to be paid.
Yeah, and some of these issues came up in the briefing with the county commissioners this morning. And yeah, the open space tax program, you can hop into that. And if it doesn't work for you, you can hop out of that. Long-term ag is a, and I'm using the term that the county is using, even though I think Ben is technically correct on that. That locks you down a little bit more in some ways. And my thinking on this, go ahead, I'm sorry I interrupted you, Betsy.
Well, the reason I asked this question is because converting to natural habitat is possibly more beneficial for climate change than agriculture.
I don't think that's necessarily inconsistent with a long-term ag designation. I represented a client whose land could not be used for agriculture, could only be used for natural habitat, but had been designated as agricultural land of a long-term significance. And the Western Growth Management Act said, that's okay. And by the way, you can't actually use the land for anything because you can't use it for agriculture and you can't use it for anything else. So that happens.
I think the main thing it does is it prevents certain development that would otherwise happen in the absence of that type of zoning.
Sure.
Yep, that's exactly right. And a more intensive development that essentially covers soils that could otherwise be used for ag. And leaving the land in a natural state is not going to trigger that kind of regulatory response. I just don't see how that happens.
The other question I had was related to conservation easements compared to purchase of development rights. What are the pros and cons of those two approaches? And how does the county think about those?
I think you've just stepped into the next phase of this planning project where they're going to start to look at these various policy options and identify the pros and cons of them. They haven't got there yet. They indicated to the commissioners today that that's the next step in the process. And I'm sure we'll have ample opportunity to look at that data and weigh in on that as they start to hone in on specific policy recommendations. Cognizant of time, I want to try to bring some closure to this. I heard several people mention that we should write a letter, or they're okay writing a letter. I think I'd like to go a slightly different route with this at this point. I'd like to draft a resolution for the board to be put on our May board meeting agenda. And it would be a fairly general resolution in noting the problem with farmland loss, noting the project that's underway, et cetera, and weighing in that we think there should be more acres dedicated to long-term agriculture without getting into the specifics, because we're going to have a lot of time to get into the specifics in the future when there's more data and more concrete proposals here. But more of a philosophical thing. And I think passing it as a resolution with the full board, actually, and sending that to the county, will be a stronger statement than just writing a letter. So that's the direction I'd suggest that we go if people are willing to do that. And if you are, I'd be willing to work with Sarah to draft up a resolution for our next meeting.
I think that's good times of the essence. Let's get her done.
Yeah, I like it as well. The only question I have is the timeliness of it. Are there any deadlines or anything that we'd best by wait until next meeting?
No, not at all. The briefing with the commissioners today was just the first check-in on this project. The staff will be going back to the commissioners throughout this process. And because this is really the first significant issue that's been identified, that they're kind of looking for some opinion on. I think if we get something to them this month, that'll be very helpful and it'll help push the long-term ag designation research work at the county along a little bit and give some support to the staff that are looking into that.
I think that's, I mean, that's kind of how they were, that's how the county was approaching it with the Agricultural Steering Committee. They just, all they were really asking for was a resolution. You know, that's all they felt they really needed.
Okay, so no objections to that. Sarah and I will work on a resolution to be put on our May board meeting agenda and then transmitted to the county. Last thing I just wanted to mention, and I could put this in chat, but this is for you, Sarah. In the briefing today, Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Mensah, I might be wrong about that, but they were curious. They wanted to know about the age of farmers, how many young people were looking for land, and how many old people were looking for young people to take land, et cetera. And both Stephen Bramwell and Jennifer talked generally about that, but Farm Link never came up. So, and I know they know about that, but if there's any data that we have through Farm Link that could inform Stephen and Jennifer in that answer, because they're going to be, they've sort of been asked to get back some information to the commissioners on that. And I think we have something that could help.
I would love to share that with all of them. We can certainly put something together.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody. Let's move on then to item seven here on our agenda, the policy update schedule. Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to pull that document up really quickly. And before I do, we developed a policy update schedule right at the close, or sort of a high, medium, low priority list. It wasn't as much a schedule. Right at the close of our collective bargaining process, prior to that agreement taking place, this is what informed our last big, huge policy update, merging the collective bargaining agreement terms with our policies and procedures document and getting that big new shiny policy and procedure manual. So now, looking back at our policies and procedures, prior to our collective bargaining process, the district's board would entertain and look at and review and familiarize themselves with and make necessary revisions to. Policies usually on a monthly basis. Review one and have conversation about it in a work session, vet it, verify it, make sure it's updated and approve it at that board meeting or a future board meeting. And sort of be on this cycle of just continuously looking at policy to make sure that it stays current and relevant. My first question is, is that a cycle that this board is interested in being in on a regular basis and timeline and schedule? Or would you prefer to address policy issues, updates and concerns, you know, sporadically or spontaneously as they occur, if there's a need, right? As there's some sort of, you know, something that's spurring that piece? So those are two questions. And then I have, I'll unfreeze my screen so you can see this document. This was the list of policies from our policies and procedures that we saw back at the end of 2019. It's been a while. The policies with the strike-through in here are ones that we either already addressed outside of the CBA process or as part of that big project to merge these policies. I've highlighted a couple here in yellow, as you can see. Soil nutrient testing, which I've actually moved to the high priority category. And I can go into that in-depth in the future. Or now, if the board would prefer, public records disclosure. That's always one with changing legislation that we want to stay current on. Our conflict of interest policy is the same, always one that we want to stay current on and make sure that we've anticipated everything in that. As some of the highest priorities that I've identified as we scroll. Apologies, it's a long list. If we can find our other table here, which has disappeared. There we go. You know, sort of our medium-tier priorities. For a lot of our financial processes, as we continue to refine things and, you know, as the State Auditor's Office releases new guidance, you know, we clean up processes and procedures of things. And so just making sure, these are important processes of the district. Of course, financial accountability is very important. And so medium-tier, nothing that is spurring that at this moment other than just making sure that those are following those best practices. And so as those come out, you know, Susan integrates those pieces and makes note of them and has a good record there. So these are a lot of other policies in the handbook that are fairly low priority. And they are categorized and subject to CBA and not subject to CBA. So the board has a better understanding of what policies, you know, we'll need to make sure that we are involving the staff, collective bargaining team in and which ones are really outside of that CBA scope. So I just wanted to do a check-in on this with the board to see if there was interest in establishing a cycle and/or just addressing on a need-based. And then these would be my top three suggestions for need-based policies from the staff side.
Betsy?
I would like to see us get it on the schedule and be proactive rather than waiting until it's a need-based thing. I don't think it's going to take that long. And it'd be nice to have this housekeeping task underway. And I like lists and crossing off lists. Let's do it. I'm very curious about how soil and nutrient testing relates to CBA, but...
Sorry, that one's in the not-subject-to-CBA high priority category. This is subject-to-CBA down here, but I just put project completed because we completed a lot of those in our merger.
Okay, that's what I get for scanning.
My recollection, when we first started talking about this, it was a big issue for our previous chair. And I felt like we, as a board, spent too much time trying to decide which should come first and which could come second. So while I agree with Betsy that I like to be proactive with this, I would be comfortable allowing staff to sort of decide the prioritization on the policies. But to bring them to us in a regular fashion so that we can work through the list and cross things off, as you say. But, you know, I would look at this and I say, well, I have no idea, is this more important than that? Or is that more important for some of these technical things? I would think staff would be a much better judge of what should come first and what should come second. Yeah, Betsy?
I just want to respond to that. I guess maybe I didn't, I didn't mean to say we would create the list. I was saying that, yes, staff would say this is priority.
Yeah, no, and I didn't mean to imply that I thought you were saying that. I'm saying that I thought, under our previous chair, we spent too much time trying to create the list.
Yes, I agree. I agree. I like that there is a list that exists and I trust the staff to tell us what they think we should work on first.
Their thoughts, board members?
That sounds, that sounds good to me as well. And I think we should appoint Betsy as the official offer.
You don't like my family, yeah, and hysterics. I am
I agree with Betsy and we'll be forward on getting somebody taken care of.
So perhaps, you know, we have a number of items that are sort of standing items on our agenda. Maybe we make this kind of a standing item on our work sessions, policy update, and leave it to staff to bring something to us or not bring something to us if they don't need to in a particular month. But we kind of have it there as a placeholder, so we don't forget about it. Does that make sense to folks?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah, do you feel like you got what you needed to from the board on this topic?
Absolutely perfect. That was a great process on my end. Thank you guys so much.
All right. Okay, that takes us to one more item before we do our staff presentation. So we'll do updates and announcements, starting with the board. Doug, do you have anything?
Let me get off mute here. Yeah, we're starting the process for the joint Pacific slash Southwest region of NACD joint meeting in Jackson, Wyoming on August 30th and 31st. We don't have an agenda set up yet, but we're working on it and putting ideas back and forth. If y'all are able to go, or any of you are able to go, it's really an eye-opener to go to some of those meetings. And I will have a more in-depth report for the board meeting later this month.
Betsy, do you have anything? No, Betsy. David, anything from you?
No, I don't have anything from you today.
Helen?
Nope. I emailed, you know, some notes from the TRPC stuff, but I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. The only thing I'll say is that we met with the Olympia group looking at farmland preservation stuff. I guess it was last week. And Sarah made a great presentation. She had compiled a very large spreadsheet of all of the organizations in the community that have a role in this in terms of either farmland, preservation, economic development, training, resources, et cetera. It was well-received by the group. It was an excellent spreadsheet. We looked at it, kind of talked through it. And I think the next step with that group is we're actually finally getting to the point where we're going to start to talk about some policy options. Councilmember Madrone is going to be presenting some stuff that she's pulled together at our next meeting and in terms of what other places around the country and around the world are doing, other cities are doing in this area. And some of what she's been working on is some of the stuff that I've been working on. So I think I'm seeing some symmetry in some of the models that we're looking at potentially there. The other interesting thing to note is that councilmember Lisa Partially has also been sitting in on these meetings recently. And she's the city's representative to the Climate Action Team or whatever. And she's the city's representative to the climate action team or whatever, whatever it is, the climate steering committee, I always lose the terms. But she is really, really committed to making sure that agriculture is a big part of the regional climate strategy. And she's, she's turning out to be a real champion for the process we're going on, that's going on through Olympia right now. But I think she's going to be a good champion regionally for making that linkage between ag and climate in these larger discussions. So we'll meet again the first Tuesday of June and then that'll be our last meeting, I believe, before we meet with the city council, land use and environment committee to give them an update on our work and kind of a check in time with them. That'll happen in July. That concludes supervisor report. Takes us to ED report, Sarah.
Thanks. I've got a couple of things, but I'll be quick. Can you guys still hear me okay? Perfect. Thank you. One of which is an exciting piece. Councilmember Madrone is also the new policy director for American Farmland Trust. So she was just hired on and start next month in that position. So there'll be a whole nother layer of resources and connections and just amazing passion and support behind policy development at an even broader level that will undoubtedly translate down to our local community. So that's a really exciting opportunity, I think, for all of us involved here. The other thing is that our salary study consultants have been pulling together some of the information and resources from our last, or from their last salary study comparison with another conservation district, familiarizing themselves with that approach. We have a meeting next week to sort of go over timelines and benchmarks and highlights of that process, as well as talk about process for engaging with the staff and making presentations and, you know, providing those reports and progress pieces back to the district. So that's underway and moving forward and I'm excited about that piece. The Citizens Advisory Committee, we've been conducting really robust outreach on. Staff have taken that list of ideas and places and community groups that was identified by the board and have been finding new opportunities and avenues to reach out and advertise that every day. We've received some questions and some inquiries, some interest. No formal applications yet on that, but there's been a lot of sharing of those materials and a lot of communication about that. Even though we're in this virtual world, our staff are still, you know, participating in all of these virtual community meetings and workshops and, you know, public processes. And so that comes up really often. So I will share those applications as they're received. The other piece is that we are scheduled in the second half of this year, I shouldn't say scheduled yet, but we are on target for another accountability audit. This is sort of coming out of, you know, our 2018 prior years. This is the two-year cycle audit for this one. After we receive our glowing review at this year's accountability audit, we will likely be on a three-year cycle instead of a two-year cycle. So we are just started having conversations with the State Auditor's Office about scheduling that sometime later this year. So they will reach out to us to let us know where we shake out in that lineup and then we'll bring that information back and keep the board informed about that process. The other piece, and you might have seen a little teaser when Leah shared her screen, is that we're getting really close on developing the smart sheet dashboard. I think we're a little bit further ahead of our timeline than I anticipated on developing the supervisor interface, which I did not anticipate would be done until next year. The staff one is just about ready for deployment and we're already utilizing some of the tools and processes that we've built within that structure. And it is just a world of difference. I think that the board is going to be really excited about having this sort of home base for district stuff that you don't have to, you can set as your desktop, you can stay logged into, you don't have to access files in different places, all your board meeting stuff can live there, you can submit your mileage reimbursement through it. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of really great features about it and we can continuously update the backend. So there's no more hunting and sifting through emails and things like that. So anyway, I'm just really excited, staff. It's a ton of work to build any sort of technology and infrastructure, any sort of databases or software. But we, our staff is working really hard on this and I'm really excited to start to see that shake through. It's going to mean a lot for us as we look at even our data tracking and aggregating metrics and telling our story. I mean, it's revolutionizing our district that, you know, has operated in process very similarly, you know, probably to our inception and when process was organized back then. So those are a couple of the highlights I just wanted to share really quickly before we get to the main show here with Adam and his soil health presentation. Unless anyone has any questions, that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And yeah, so that does take us to the presentation, staff presentation of the month here. Adam, Soil Health Program. Welcome, Adam. Are you ready to take it?
Hi, everyone. And oh, it looks like you gave me permission for sharing my screen, so I'll share my screen here. And if I can just kind of segue from Sarah, I will say I love Smart Sheets and it's done wonders for the Soil Health Program. So I'll talk a little bit, a little bit about that here, but just really excited to be integrating that and some wonderful work from Kiana helping getting that going. So, and also thanks so much for letting me present a little bit later. I was just, had my appointment for my second dose of Moderna right at three, so I just kind of had to join in halfway through, but appreciate the flexibility. So yes, I'm really excited to talk about the Soil Health Program. And let me make sure I got my arrow keys working. I do, great. So the Soil Health Program is kind of umbrella that encompasses two main components. The first is our soil and nutrient testing program. And the second is our spreader rentals, anything used to spread nutrients, so that that's manure or lime. That was kind of formally grouped in with the rest of our rentals, but it's been kind of separated out and incorporated within the umbrella of the Soil Health Program since it's so, so important to nutrient management. I want to start off by mentioning all the staff who are involved in the Soil Health Program. So I'm the current manager, but there are many folks who helped make this work. So Leah is just invaluable and all of the administrative side of things, you know, whether she's meeting folks down at the Scatter Creek Farm to arrange pickups or arranging payment or just answering general inquiries. Could not do it without Leah. Emily and Marguerite are great in answering some of the technical assistance questions related to our spreaders and Emily also helps with our soil tests for pastors and halens. So just want to give them a shout out, as well as her outreach team who are, you know, updating the website, managing the Smart Sheets and, you know, making videos, informational videos. So it's a real team effort. So I want to start off by talking about our soil testing program. So our soil testing program focuses on testing soil nutrients with nutrient management in mind. So a lot of this centers around agricultural production, but also gardens, lawn landscaping. There's some testing that has to do with post-construction permit requirements of the county, so we run tests for those. And then some folks just have general concerns about whether there's toxic or deficient levels of nutrients in their soil. So wherever it involves soil nutrients, that's where the test, that testing that we do can come into play. And there are some tests that we refer out for. Some folks, you know, think maybe we could test for soil contaminants and that's really more the purview of an environmental lab, environmental testing lab, of which there's a number within the county. And so for those, we'll refer folks out to this really handy web map from the Department of Ecology, which shows a state certified environmental testing labs. Some folks also may have soil disease issues around pathogens. And so, you know, if there's, if staff aren't able to identify that, we'll often refer folks up to the WSU plant clinic. They have a diagnostic plant pathologist, Janie Glass, up there who's really great and we're really lucky to have her as a local resource in the South Sound area. So how do soil tests come in? So we have a streamlined online form that Kiana put together that's powered by Smart Sheets. So it's really great because it only answers the questions related to the tests that you're getting done. So if you're getting a soil test done, it'll ask you only soil test specific questions. It lets us know all the details we need to interpret their soil tests, but also streamlines record keeping. And because they're entering it in, it really, you know, they're putting their details in, so it reduces the chance for error in a lot of cases. So after they fill out that form, then the next step, oh, I'm getting a little bit of feedback and it's, maybe somebody mute their mic if, if that's possible. Sorry, it's just a little disruptive. I think it's gone now. Cool. So the next step is for folks to drop off their soil samples. And so our current no contact method, that's been in place since February, involves folks dropping off a sample in a cooler just placed outside the front door of our office. So this has worked really well. Folks drop them off in the cooler, there's ice packs in the cooler that keep the samples cool so they don't heat up, which can affect the results. And then we bring those in daily and refrigerate them. And then once a week, Leah will package up the samples that we've received across the past seven days and we'll send them down to A&amp;L Labs in Portland, Oregon. So they're a regional soil testing lab, which is used across Northwest, back when I used to work in Northern California, you know, they certainly use them as well. So they're, they're kind of regionally recognized lab that does a lot of agricultural testing services. Within about a week, we receive the soil test results back and so we, all these numbers. And we, as soon as we receive them, we begin working on interpretive reports for the results. So we just try and make sure they're relatable and we can generate actionable recommendations for our cooperators. So here's an example of kind of one of the versions of the soil test reports that we have. And so this one's kind of a more concise version, but it breaks it down into some main sections, which I'll walk you through. So this one has a narrative which goes through kind of the overall pertinent findings of the soil test. So if there's any, you know, excessive levels of nutrients, sometimes you see phosphorus a bit high and I'll talk about that later. You know, if certain nutrients are lower, need supplementation, we'll mention that. And then, yeah, just sort of general recommendations. Here at the bottom, what we do is we take some of those numbers and each of these columns tries to explain it. So the result here is in the left, most of these three columns, and there's a rating showing generally how, how those levels rate, whether that's a nutrient or soil pH, you know, in this case moderately acidic. And then we list what's needed for crops. The particular crop they want us to interpret the test for, we have the standard there so they can see whether they're below or above that threshold. And then on the right most two columns, we have a short interpretation of kind of, you know, what, that level means that they have. And then a recommendation if they need to do something to address making their soil more optimal. And so any row shown here in yellow is something that we're recommending they, they apply fertilizer or do some management on. The backside has a consolidated fertilizer table. So the goal is that they can take this into agricultural feed store, garden store and, you know, look at this list and look at the products and hopefully, you know, have an easy time locating them and purchasing them. We mentioned the application rate that they need to apply at their scale, they can request which scale they want to apply it, whether it's per hundred square feet, per thousand square feet or per acre. And then we include really comprehensive instructions on when to apply it during the season and how to apply it, whether there are any particular considerations. And then at the end, we have information talking about just how to calculate the total amount they need from the rate. So they need to, you know, calculate the area they're applying over, but we also have information just on how to, how to understand nutrient concentrations of fertilizer, how to read an MPK rating on a bag of fertilizer. So they're, they're knowing the concentration of the fertilizer they're putting on and not accidentally over or underapplying, which for certain nutrients like boron, you really don't want to overapply it or underapply it, but it comes in a wide range of concentration. So this is really important and something that we try to make accessible. So how are the reports written? You know, how do I generate my recommendations? And I always want to be transparent about that. I rely primarily off four sources. The first one would be the latest crop specific guidance from Regional University Extension Publications. Sometimes we get some requests for more niche crops. So I've, you know, I got a request for olives, so I had to go to University of California for that, of course, because Orient State University's research in that area is still ongoing. But yeah, so look for the latest publications. Also look at A&amp;L Labs Guidance. They have some guidance sheets on, you know, things like lime application, just general ranges of nutrients. And there's a lot of overlap, again, with a lot of these extension publications. Also refer back to some of soil science texts. So I have this in the bottom left, the nature and property of soils. It's a photo of my own copy, so that's something that anybody with soil science classes will recognize. It's the classic soil text. And it's really helped me through some puzzling situations on a few times. And then we always refer back to past soil test results and experiences. So whenever we get somebody who submits a test, I look back in the records that Nicole kept when, before I took up the program in October and look to see if they've had tests, you know, what management it was recommended. So I always consider all these four elements. I want to talk a little bit about what are people testing for? Thurston County agriculture and is diverse. So we have, I'd say the majority are pasture hay, mixed vegetables, flowers and lawns. Those are probably the majority. But we have a large number of crops that folks ask for. So strawberries, blueberries are fairly common, but I've done wine grapes, lingonberries, you know, raspberries, blackberries, pawpaws and olives. So it's always interesting to see what comes in and sometimes it's a bit of a challenge to find university extension recommendations for some of the crops. But, but overall, it's been a great experience and I've been able to find recommendations. So the volume, how many people are testing? So for 2021, we've had 84 landowners submit a total of 120 samples with us so far for 2021. There's typically a spring wave, as you might expect, as people submit tests and want to know what to apply going into the growing season. And we've had 87 samples submitted, or I interpreted 87 samples between March and April, which made this our busiest two-month period on records or so far, biggest kind of spring wave. So it was a kind of a really busy first year for me running the soil testing program, but it was great to see so many folks engaging with the district. I want to talk briefly about the types of recommendations. So we ask folks their preference, whether they want organic or conventional soil test fertilizer recommendations, or they don't have a preference. And so this is the general split of that. Most folks are asking for organic, some folks, a few folks asking for conventional and then others having no preference. And then a few requests for both, so for some folks who want to compare. Another great thing I think is understanding the scale of, the scale that folks are applying fertilizer across. So they can ask to have the recommendations be per pounds per hundred square feet, pounds per thousand square feet or pounds per acre. And so for the most part, most folks using our testing program are asking for the smaller scales. You know, we have a lot of folks, you know, who are doing backyard gardening, homesteading, small-scale ag. And then, but definitely some larger folks, and on the per acre side of things, definitely a lot more folks with pastures or hayfield. So they're kind of a good portion of this, the larger acreages. And one thing I've developed kind of an innovation, just to help me save time, is creating nutrient spreadsheets. So these are kind of Excel documents that auto calculate the amount of fertilizer I need for each nutrient. And it's turned hours of work into just minutes. It's removed chances for human error, so I'm not, you know, doing calculations on a calculator and accidentally mistyping a number. And it provides a record for future reference. So I save these for every soil test report I do, so I can go back and see why I recommended what fertilizer I did. And so just to show you, like, the page, the sheet for potassium, if, say I need 100 pounds of potassium per acre and I need to turn that into some guidance for somebody who wants to apply potassium for their garden, I just add 100 to this box, scroll down. And for the three potassium fertilizers I commonly recommend, it automatically shows the pounds and ounces on a 100 square, per 100 square foot and per 100 square foot basis. So I can copy, take that and take that directly into a soil test report. So this has just been really valuable and I'm glad I've taken the time to work on this and it's something I keep, I keep working on, just to try and make it more useful. Going to have this for every nutrient and I've even created a limestone balancer. So now I can recommend two different types of lime and the proportions that will both meet their pH needs, but also balance their calcium and magnesium. So this, this is saving me a lot of time. Took some algebra to get it to work, but glad I spent the time on it. And yeah, just happy about that. All the soil testing that we've received since October, I've also compiled into one Excel spreadsheet. So it's actually not that difficult to copy the data over from A&amp;L Labs reports into an Excel spreadsheet, thankfully. And I've done, just, I haven't spent too much time on this. This is something I've just spent like, you know, a few hours just since, since the spring wave has eased up and I've had some more time. But I've been able to analyze it in an open source statistical program I used to use back when I was at WSU. And it really helps us monitor trends in soil health in our county in a matter of seconds. So I've seen some trends, but this really helps me visualize it. So I pop in some codes and this is just a simple histogram, but this is phosphorus levels for all the soil tests that have come in since October. And so I consistently see really high levels of. And so I consistently see really high levels of phosphorus. Here on the, on the X-axis, you can see the parts per million of phosphorus coming in. Anything over 100 is considered excessive, and you really don't need too much. You only need 30 parts per million for lawns and pastures, about 50 for vegetables. And so kind of high soil phosphorus is something that's, that's common for a lot of reasons that I probably don't have enough time to go into, but it's something that I, it just, just want to make sure I incorporate into my reports and, and make sure folks are managing those correctly. You know, there's some potential water quality concerns around high phosphorus, if they're next to a body of water, and, you know, high phosphorus can also potentially decrease colonization of plant roots by fungal mycorrhizae, which are something we, we want to have happy in the soil. So there's reasons for folks to, to keep an eye on their phosphorus. So recommending low phosphorus fertilizers, you know, really carefully considering manure applications for, as a nitrogen source if their phosphorus is, is already creeping up. Or it's just, you know, these are really important things that I keep in context. Just some other analyses I've been looking at, just correlations between different factors. There's some really interesting patterns that I, I want to dive into later when I have more time, but just, there's, there's a lot of potential here that I'm excited about. Soil testing is not the only testing that we do. We do another range, a, a range of different types of nutrient tests. You know, soils are the main samples that we get, but we also get plant tissue tests. So these are really important for orchards, berry crops, a lot of perennials, where levels in the soil don't always mean that the plant's getting the nutrients it needs to. There may be issues with tree roots or, or compaction, and so you really want to look at how much is in the plant. And if it might be low in the plant but high in the soil, and then, then you know that there's some issues with uptake, you know, and you might need to use a foliar feed. So this is something that I, I expect myself to be recommending a lot more of, because university extension publications do recommend you go off of plant tissues for a lot of, a lot of orchard crops. And we do manure lagoon testing, so nutrient man, that's really important for nutrient management for dairies. And we also analyze compost and manure, because they vary so much in their nutrient composition. So we can have folks test their compost or manure, pair that up with a soil test, and give them tailored recommendations for how much they should apply based on their soil test results. So that's something that we can pair together, and it's, it's really fun to, to take those two things and, and make sure they're, they're meeting their needs precisely. We do hay nutrient analysis, so that's looking at nutrient content of forage. We do selenium analysis, that's a nutrient that's pretty much overall, almost universally low in Pacific Northwest soils for a number of reasons, but it's really important for livestock nutrition. And then this is a test that we brought on board when I started doing irrigation management plans last year, and Nicole was offering these to folks, and we continue to offer a water-holding capacity analysis. So if we're working with somebody who has a soil that's maybe some sort of urban fill, or they got some soil mix, we'll run this test so we can understand how much water their soil holds, and then we can do irrigation planning for them for that. So to focus on the second aspect of, of the Soil Health Program, there are our spreader rentals. So we currently have three spreaders for rent, the large manure spreader, small manure spreader, and our drop spreader, which is used primarily for lime. The spin spreader, I believe, is currently needing repair, but I hope to have that up again. We have a new, new rental process, so we, spreader rentals are offered in half-week periods, one running from Monday through Thursday, which is great for folks to have more weekday availability, and then Thursday to Monday slots, which are great for folks who need it over the weekend. And so cooperators can reserve multiple periods in a row, it's just we're reserving in these kind of half-week chunks. And the reason is, the reason why we do this is for our new rain check system. So it's a way that we can make sure landowners, cooperators have predictable scheduled times for their equipment, but they have the flexibility to shift the reservations. So if there's more than a quarter inch of rain on the forecast for the, you know, three day, for the next three days, you know, say it's their first day getting the spreader, we alert them and let them know that they can postpone their reservation. If they don't want to spread during rainy weather, which is not good for water quality, but also not good for their manure retaining the nutrients that they want to make, go, you know, fertilize their, their pasture, they can postpone that. And so to show you what that looks like, this is just a general calendar of, of somebody who might have a rental period from Monday through Thursday, and let's say there's rain, we will offer them the next available period if they want to hold off or spreading, and we just shift it to the next available period. If somebody else's has a rental period during, during that next half-week chunk, we offer them the next one. And this is something that we've just launched, and we've already used once, and I think the person who received it is actually, still has that equipment, but it's great because they, you know, they, they heard our, our concerns about the, you know, about the rainy weather, and they chose to postpone. So it's a really great way to offer predictability, work with their schedule, and also ensure that, that folks aren't, aren't spreading during rain if they don't have to. We have a, a number of guidance documents that we refer to folks. There's a manure management flyer that was developed by Nicole Warren, and all, all of this too, I'm kind of standing on the shoulders of Nicole. So a big shout out to her for leaving things in just such, just so well for me to pick up and then continue. So, but the manure management flyer that she, she developed is, is a great resource that we send to folks who, who rent this, gives a general overview of manure management concepts, and it's really relevant to those spreading their own manure. Have a document on the website for kind of re, explaining the reason why you don't want to spread during rain, why, why there are these climate considerations. And then we have a biosafety procedure for our spreader, so we are not inadvertently spreading diseases or pests from one operation to the next. So this is just good, good, good general practices. And there's also a really great video that was developed, I think this is started before I took, uh, managed the program, but that, that goes, that discusses use of the manure spreader. And so I think this is really exciting, having videos showing things in action, and I'd like to see potentially more of in the future with the program. So yeah, some more instructional videos showing, you know, how to take different types of tests, maybe tissue samples from an orchard or, or vineyard, you know, how to use the other spread, the, the drop spreader. And yeah, just future areas of growth, I think there's room to keep streamlining and adaptively managing things as, as they arise. And also just to identify and document soil health concerns, especially, you know, looking back on data and just to seeing how things have changed yearly and seasonally. There's data going all the way back to 2017 that Nicole has, so it's just a really great resource, and we can go back and see how things have, have varied over the past four years. So with that, I'll, I'll stop my presentation and see if there are any questions. I hope I didn't go too, too much over time.
Questions for Adam?
I just have one quick comment, TJ.
Yeah?
I just wanted to, to share that Adam has just done an amazing job, and there's definitely been a whole bunch of folks involved in developing this program and these processes, and, but we definitely could not have done this without Adam and just the additional skills and layers of, of data collection and thinking about this and knowledge of specific crops and, and processes, but also this really just unwavering commitment to the community and making this accessible and useful and practical for community applications. It's just so appreciated. So I just, I really want to say that Adam's done a really amazing job developing this program and has a great vision for its future, and these, these changes that we're making are to help make us accountable, right, as, as purveyors of this equipment and this testing program, so that, you know, we're not contributing to water quality concerns, and we're helping producers, you know, realize the, the advantage and, and capture and access the advantages of, of their nutrients on site. And this is met with a growing capacity of the districts. You know, we are seeing more and more people through our doors than ever before, like Adam mentioned with our soil testing program, seeing 80 folks in about a two-month period, you know, might be comparable to a year in the past. And so being able to scale up and accommodate that growing demand, a lot of these technologies and tools that Adam's invested in developing are, are allowing us to do so, where in the past it was, you know, a 40-hour or 80-hour conservation plan development with each individual producer, and we just, we, we need to meet a volume of demand from the community that is so much greater than ever before. And so we're rising to that challenge, and I, you know, I want to thank Adam for, for helping us do that, because yeah, this, this is a great evolution of this program.
Thank you, Adam. I thought it was a great presentation. It's exciting to see you figuring out how to help more people, and I'll be curious to see if we have more ways to reach people who are needing to know more about fertilizing their lawns or not.
Yeah, that, thank you. And yeah, lawns have been, I would say, were the more increasing types of soil tests that have been coming through. So I think, I think there, there is that kind of rising demand for that, and there, there's certainly different options, differently, different options, different ways to manage, manage lawns. So folks can definitely take a more low, low-demand approach, you know, lower fertilizer, so just kind of showing those options, and, and I think it's, it's going to be important.
Well, as a soil, hardcore soil nerd, the last 20 minutes have been Nirvana for me. So thank you, Adam, and I'm super excited to see the improvement in the recommendations that we're giving to, to customers. I've, I've used the district for testing soil for many years, and it's always been useful, but I think the way you've honed in on what's really important is going to make it, it's just so much more user-friendly than it's been in the past. And the fact that we now have a context for this stuff, both in some of the technical stuff you're doing, but overall, like tying manure spreaders to soil testing and, and building this whole kind of program, it's a context that I think lacked in the past, and it's a story to tell, which is really cool. And I hope we tell that story, I hope you tell that story at the next WACD conference, because I think this is something that is awesome, and we should be sharing with other districts and, and talking to other folks about as well. So thanks for the good work so much, really appreciate it.
Cool, thank you, TJ.
Okay, we are just past five o'clock, so we're gonna thank Adam for being here. We're gonna move back very quickly and just get a draft board agenda put together here. That was the last item on today's list. Sarah, do you have a draft for us started, or are we gonna just throw one on the screen here?
We're gonna go ahead and, and put one on the screen, other than the, the standing items that we typically have. I also captured the resolutions.
For long-term ag? Yep.
And executive session as well for employee performance.
And as a reminder to the board, that is Sarah's mid-year evaluation, so it's a chance for the board to talk about Sarah's performance thus far in 2021. Will we also have anything for the RFQ at that point? Will the board need to be making a decision in any regard on that RFQ process?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, that, that is my hope, is that we will have a recommendation and accompanying materials after our meeting with the committee for this, and I will, I will share if there's any issues to that process, but that is the intent.
Okay, great. So we have the RFQ approval, and as you say, all the other standing items. Anything else anyone sees we should put on this draft agenda?
Are we gonna move forward on policy review? Yep.
That'll happen at the work session for approval at the meeting, so it'll probably start in June.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's a good starting point. I'm sure it will change over the next several weeks as new things come up. But with that, I am going to have us adjourn this special meeting of the Conservation District Board of Supervisors. It's now 5:06. Thanks, everybody, for yet another productive meeting and great conversation, and get out and enjoy the beautiful night, and we'll see you in two weeks for the board meeting. Bye.